Uh-oh, somebody put the flag back on.
Oh, get the hell out of here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, it does. Yes, please, yeah. Excuse us for a minute, we have a changing of the flags. I'm going out of the way before I get in trouble here. They were running a duty stand. No public hearings. Open the meeting to the public, comment from the public. That's you.
Nice play, there, a moment.
Say your name and address, please.
Ralph Ware, Two Tran Drive. I'm not here to make any major complaints, I'm not here to be blazing guns or anything, but since I've lived on Tran Drive, there's been problems on the corner, as I think everybody probably discussed it. They continue to go across the lawn. Every year I replace the sod, or replace fill in there, plant grass seed. This year I put sod in there. I don't want you to think I went out and bought it, I didn't, but my neighbor happened to be doing some work, so I brought sod over and it came back fairly good. And that's the same problem at either end, you know, Gary Fabro has the same problem. Kelly's across from me, they put up planting a new hedge a year or so ago. People are going across the hedge, they cut it even shorter there. So I was wondering if there's anything we can do. Curvings would be wonderful, of course. That pylon that's there, or whatever we call the cone that I...
It helps, doesn't it?
Oh, yeah, it does, it does, really help. However, the kids like to kick it down all the time, so you want to put it back off. And there's also, I feel there's some drainage problems at my neighbor's, it doesn't cause me a problem, but Jennifer Lee's, which is next door.
Did you compare that last fall with what you had in the manhole right over the corner?
Still, in my opinion, it's still out there. John's closer to it than I am, but crossroad, Steve's, he's always there. And I think it is better Jennifer's coming, I agree, but it's not gone, but across the road, it's a... Of course, my biggest concern is the curbing.
And we do have some correspondence or talks with the marshal superintendent?
I have yours. John Fosher from Six Tran Drive. I spoke with Bobby Clark last fall about the different problems that we have, drainage problems for Jennifer, Ralph's constant lawn problem, the Kelly's lawn, and he said, "Well, what do you suggest?" I said, "No, if you put some curvings up around it to guide the traffic through the curve, it would help out greatly." Well, just so happens Bobby Sterling was working with him that day, they were looking at patching the corner of the street, because the street needs some repair also, and he said it'd probably be a good idea, he said, he could take care of the street problems and take care of the lawn problems and the drainage all in one shot. When I spoke with him approximately about three weeks ago, he said he would do it and could do it, but it was up to the board's approval and to look into it. Spoke with Ralph again, and he said we'd look into it a little further, and that's why Ralph and I are both here. Something needs to be done on the corner. We'd like to have it addressed, if we could.
I would guess that Larry Kelly would have come down, however, he's in the hospital, president. Pardon me?
I know that problem exists, okay. If you look at it, Sam, like you know, I have a work experience. I don't have a problem with it, personally, if Bobby's got the time and the help to do it, to do it. Like I told John today, that it would probably be later on this fall, before they got to do it.
If that's what ends up being done, I don't care.
I'm just saying...
End of the year is fine with me, that's great, I'm happy to hear it if that's what happens.
We've got some major projects going on, and we really need to get them cleaned up. He's got one that's two years old at Tani, that he has to take care of, and that's a ball burner.
When this problem was discussed with me last year, last year, the suggestion was made to put in, like, telephone pole pilings, which I didn't think would be very attractive in that area, so I wasn't... And when it was discussed with me at that time, I kind of expected to see them there the next day, that was the urgency with which it was discussed. So I guess I was kind of happy to not see them there the next day, but if the problem still exists, and you feel that that curving would solve the problem, and we have the time and the money to do it, I don't have a problem with that. My only question is, at what distance are we talking? Are we just simply talking the curve, the curve?
We were talking originally just on the S part of the curve, from like Ralph's driveway, around the corner of the bend, and on the opposite side, same parallel distance around the S curve, more or less like a maze, so they have to drive that way.
And that wouldn't cause any additional problems, that you know more?
Not that, actually, I don't know about stone plowing, if it caused any problems.
See, Bobby was there that day, when I spoke with Bobby Clark, and he said it'd probably be better to give him a chance to be able to guide the plow through the corner and not tear up the lawns that they have to repair every year. And he said they'd do the same type of plowing on different streets through the village, so there wasn't a problem at that point.
After Ralph called today, I spoke to Bob Clark. He said he has no problem doing this, he said exactly what you're saying, he said all he wanted is the board to give him the go-ahead and approve having this done, and it would be done before winter. Like you said, we have those major projects going, but he said he'd work it in.
Would you like a motion to object, I'll put a motion on the floor.
I'll second. I have a motion made, executive, any more discussion? If not, signify by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Didn't hurt a bit, did it?
Thank you.
Any other people who want to address the board this time? If not, I will close the meeting to the public, and you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, a regular meeting of June 15. You have copies, is there any additions or deletions? If not, I make a motion. I have a motion, I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. I believe it's a question about the Aero Products Bill, number one on the hit list.
Yes, I just got a request from fire chief about this year. He asked us to cut the Aero Products Corporation a check, but to hold it, because he's in negotiation with them at this point to work on some agreement with the lettering on the ambulance. So I would say, I would recommend that the check be cut and just hold it until Bob approves, gets done negotiating with the company. He said the negotiations seem to go a little better today, so cut the check with his, and hold it on his approval.
I'll second. Any more discussions on this? I want to throw in two cents, ladies. As you all know, this is the bill for the ambulance, the new ambulance. Mechanically and structurally, it's a great vehicle. The biggest problem has been with the lettering and striking on the ambulance. It is not what you would call professional work. It's been sent back once, been redone. There is some improvement, but I don't see where it's all that great. But that's only my opinion, and I told Bobby yesterday, if he wanted to accept it, I would back him on it. If he wanted to disapprove it, I would back him, I would back him no matter what he would do. He's had some dilemma, or just, I guess, you might say. I agree with what you're doing. I would elect to withhold $5,000 or $10,000 if we could for a period of time, and I guess we can. There is one stipulation, I will not sign that check, and I'll tell you right now publicly, until I get a statement from that company of what it costs to send those people down there four trips, because that cost the taxpayers of this building money. I wasn't in favor from the beginning, and I'm still not there. And I'm looking somewhere around a bill of about $7,000 that was in the bid. For $7,000, they could have had that ambulance go leased, and we wouldn't have this problem. And that's all I have to say, I agree with what you're doing. Any other questions, any other bills? Or any other comments about this one?
It's a July 4 bill for DJ service, it just didn't get on the list of bills in time, they might get added, it's $150.
Anybody hear that? I entertain a motion.
I entertain a motion that we accept the bill for the July 4 edition. I'll second.
Heard the motion made, second any discussion? If not, indicate by the regular sign of aye for approval. I'm taking my word on target.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carried. Motion on the bills?
I make a motion that we accept the bill as I was presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carried. Correspondents?
First piece of correspondence you have is addressed to the village board regarding Russell Point Fire Department workers' compensation. This is from our insurance carrier, the Chauvin Agency. Per our conversation in regards to insurance premium for the above, the state insurance fund is currently providing this insurance with a premium of $15,828. I have obtained a quote from a company that writes emergency service organization known as VFIS. The premium they have quoted is $11,672. That makes a savings of $4,156. It is possible to change companies, but the change will not take effect for 30 days, as the state insurance fund requires a 30-day notice of cancellation. If you have any questions or concerns, please let me know. This is from Jean Chauvin.
Any comments on this? If you don't know what VFIS stands for, Volunteer Fire, Firemen's Insurance Service.
Do we have any familiarity with it?
Oh, excellent company. They are insuring most of the fire departments in the state.
We're familiar with the state insurance fund.
Yeah. This, I believe this came about because Bobby had been fired about, they had a big booth at the state chiefs. They're doing, they're also doing a lot with the incentive program for firefighters, these people, they're writing the policies.
I make a motion that we accept the new bid for the insurance premium.
Heard the motion made, second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
This other piece of correspondence you have is from the senior citizens council of Clinton County, it's addressed to the mayor. The senior citizens council is now making plans for the 12th annual old-fashioned picnic for senior citizens. This year it will be held on August 19 at Point Arash Day Park. This is the same picnic that they have every year, they're asking if the village would consider making a donation, they're also asking if the village would consider providing some sort of transportation for our seniors that would like to attend but are unable to drive or provide their own transportation. Last year, the mayor was gracious, our mayor Rivers was gracious enough to drive them down in the fire department van. We're really not able to make a donation, so it's up to the board if you would like to provide transportation for these people.
You know what I found out then? I call, there aren't municipalities and townships that make foundations, and the town of Saranac, such an exception, can give them $200,000. And I can't understand why we can't and they can't. We brought this, I think we brought this up once before, or we brought it up last year, and we just really never discussed it.
I think it's that, the treasurer should be the one to address that, seeing that he did call the state comptroller's office, I would rather he speak for himself regarding that.
I understand, but I can't understand how other people got away with it, Pat.
His comment was, he didn't say that NICOM did recommend that we not do that, that it was not something that we should be using taxpayers' funds for. Plus, I guess the bottom line is, when we were audited, we were written up for that, yes. So we'd rather not be again.
That clears the mud, of course, the water quite a bit. I'm planning on driving the van again, so that's not a problem.
Okay, so may I make our seniors aware of that?
Absolutely. I will size it, maybe we get more to go, we got room for 12. I took six last year.
The next piece of correspondence you have is from Redstone Fashions, 33 West Service Road in Champlain. They're asking to use the facilities here at the rec center for a picnic on August 22. They're also asking for a waiver of the open container. I have checked with Michael Bryan, and his date is fine with him, but we do need the board's approval to waive the open container law.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we waive the alcohol and beverage law for that date for this company.
I'll second. Heard the motion made, seconded, any discussion?
Do we have any idea of what size, function this is, plan B?
No, I don't. I, Redstone Fashions, I'm not familiar with Redstone Fashions.
Have to give a Mike problem.
Thank you, Brian.
So we have to give a Mike problem, Michael Bryan, to find out?
Well, our standard policy is, is that they fill out a form on the time, and there's also a deposit to be made, so I'm sure that Mike will review that.
I don't, I don't think it's a large company, but if it were, this would be a larger function, we really want to recheck it, revisit it.
I believe that Mike plans on meeting with the rec center commissioners on updating how we do this, but it's just that, he's had a few things, that's mine lately, so we kind of put this on the back burner for right now, but I'm sure that he plans on meeting with you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carried.
Okay, the next piece of correspondence we have is addressed to myself. Said I wish to submit this letter of resignation from the position of mechanic equipment operator and the position of chief code enforcement officer for the village of Russell Point. The effective date will be June 30, 1998. This letter is by the request of New York State and local retirement systems, further letter dated June 12, 1998, that I be removed from the payroll within 30 days. Sincerely, Timothy Edlin Court. I think the board has copies of the correspondence we have from the retirement system in regard to Tim. And also Mary did a report as to his final days and what time he will be taken off the payroll, completely.
Do I have a motion to accept this? Second. Any discussion?
I think it should be said, it should be said that we accepted resignation with regrets, because he certainly has performed a major function for the village in that he was basically the lead person traveling us through the zone zoning procedure, not to mention the work that he did as village mechanic with any number of vehicles.
And projects.
And projects, big projects.
Timmy was an excellent employee, private workers. Unfortunately, injuries have taken a toll on him. Very happy to see that it's finally came true for him, because he guys really suffered. Any other comments? You accept, you change your motion to accept it with regrets? All those in favor, signify by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carried.
We have another piece of correspondence addressed to Mayor George Rivers. Please accept my resignation from the village of Russell Point Zoning Board of Appeals effective July 6, 1998. It was a pleasure working with dedicated people like Ralph Ware, Ken Smith, and Tim Lindcourt. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you. Sincerely, Michael R. Rasko, zoning board member.
You just had a look on your face.
No, I wasn't going to jump in, but nobody else will, I will accept with regret, the designation of Mike Rasko from the zoning board of appeals.
You have a second? I'll second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
And that is the end of the correspondence.
Reports of board, neighborhood board. Discussion, NICOM Public Works Training School. The only discussion I have on it is unfortunate with being held in August. It's very, very hard for us to send Public Works people to these training schools when they're held this time of year, right in the middle of our construction season. We are sending correspondents to conferences, mayors, ask them to change that to late fall, when it used to be in October, so that we can send people.
Do we have any idea why they changed it?
It's been a lot, the last two or three years, they changed it to...
Right, because it always was October, which was much more convenient for us to send someone, but, you know, our staff is limited to begin with, so we really don't, we really can't send two, never, you know, not even one.
How are we going to deal with the housing issue?
Well, you get it in the first October, you get you're all set.
But, you know, it won't hurt to let them know that we're dissatisfied with this, because I can't imagine they have a large attendance, because other municipalities must be going through the same problems we are.
That's my recommendation, we're going to send them.
That was my next question, then, are we sending anybody, or are we basically boycotting them?
We're sort of boycotting, because we can't really...
Yeah, you know, and I would, I would be very strong in voicing my opinions without effect.
I don't think we need a motion on that, I believe. Next item, my bid to zoning board. At this time, I would like to appoint Mr. Len Martenson and John Fosher to the zoning board of appeals. I put that in form of a motion.
I'll listen to it. One second.
Any discussion?
Have they agreed to?
Right? Well, yes, I've talked to both of them. All those in favor, indicate by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carried. Appointment of code enforcement officer and zoning officer and deputy. I would like to appoint, I call him Bob Rasko, but I understand as Michael Rasko, as the new code enforcement officer, and Tim Lindcourt as the new zoning officer and deputy code enforcement, with no pay. Those two positions. I put that in form of a motion.
One second.
Heard the motion made, seconded, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carried. I would like to appoint my next item, is the appointment of town fire commission, Chief Robert Iggy will be the second representative to that town fire commission. I put that in form of a motion.
You're motioning, I'll second that.
Heard the motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carried. Report of municipal association banquet, to which I attended this past couple weeks ago. It was very well attended, I was very impressed. There was only two of the Northeast municipalities that were not there, that was Teresa and Philadelph. The full board, the full executive board of the municipal electric associations were there. I guess they had a great time playing golf that day, but I was having more fun with the governor. They, there was discussion on the annual, the annual meeting, which would be held in September, which is coming up later. I guess it just, we're just waiting now for everything to get approved through the courts on the rate structures and stuff, and the litigation against New York State Electric Gas on the interest. That's all I have on that. Report on July 4 celebration. I would like to, this time, say that the July 4 celebration was very, very successful this year. I think that Michael Bryan did one hell of a job, and I would likely, publicly like to thank the following people that helped him at no pay, and that's Tom Pan Marlowe, Lisa Mascall, Brian Jefferson, Carol Batty, Danny McCollum, Ken Ryan, Jerry Turner, Debbie, oh boy.
Luciano.
Luciano, I should have told you that. Mike LaTerno, Grant Dean, Mike Lemieux, Rita Marlowe, Vern Marlowe, Jared Trombley, Carol Henfield, and the judges, Pat and Elaine Corrier, and Joe Suma, plus Delagards for letting us use their property to set up the parade. I think that these people did a fantastic job putting that parade together this year. And they really, they really expressed that, what a good time they had doing it, but it was, it was a pleasure seeing people ecstatic about it. So I want to thank them publicly, I hope I thank them for the whole board. Other than that, we had a few minor skirmishes, I guess, around, which is normal, if not normal. Everything was very successful, even with the rain Saturday. I want to remind everybody that there's a public hearing on July 20th, that's our next board meeting on the cable TV franchise. Now's the time to express your complaints, so please be here. Also, at this time, I would like to make two more appointments that are not on your agenda. One is the Lake Champlain Mining Committee, or whatever it is. I have the correspondence here, if I get in the right spot. Guess I lost it, or I took it out. Anyway, it's a...
It's a local advisory committee to work on the Lake Champlain Scenic Byway project.
At this time, I would like to appoint Paul Corrier, who has agreed to do it, which will be in conjunction with this other project he's got going. He was very ecstatic about it, he thought it would work out fine. Put that in form of a motion.
I make a motion to reappoint you. Second.
Heard the motion made, seconded, all those in favor, I'm sorry, discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, signify by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carried. Also, I would like to appoint Reverend George Long to the Year 2000 Census Committee. I believe the federal government has realized that the 1990 census were not as accurate as they'd like to have them, and this committee is being formed to try to get the people to fill out those forms. I understand they mailed them to everybody for census. I understand they mailed them to everybody for census in 1990?
Oh, in 1990, I was going to say, I haven't gotten my...
No, 2000, a little ways. And people did not mail them in. For us, the Village of Rossus Point had an increase of 14 people from 1980 to 1990, which we know was way out of line. And that is to our benefit, because everything is based on your population. So I put that in form of a motion that Reverend George Long, the chairman of this committee, he's agreed to it.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? You heard the motion made in second? All those in favor signify by the usual sign of aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Carry. And I think the last, no, no, I got the... Yes, the last thing on this agenda. In our budget this year, we have got an item in there to purchase a plow, a new dump truck that we've got. And superintendent has been getting quotes. And the other day, he sat down with me, and he said, "I've sat down with Bob Sterling, and he said, 'To talk with the boys.'" And he says, "If we put a plow in that truck, that means we've got to put sand in a box in order to plow." When we put sand in a box, we don't have that truck to move stuff." His comment was, "Take that little one-ton of little Fisher plow." And that plow, that would be sufficient enough to do parking lots and stuff, so that we didn't tie up a big plow. They had to do some smaller streets for half the money. And that plow, if we ever decide to trade the truck, can be taken off and put on the other truck, it's very inexpensive. That's his recommendation. I'm throwing this out for discussion.
What year is the one-ton?
What's that little truck, what year is it, Ben? It's not that old.
I'm not sure, I would guess 94, right? I think it's 94.
Three years old. I see his reasoning, what he's saying, because in order to make that plow work in that truck, you've got to have sand in the box. You've got to have weight on it.
We need a truck three foot, small.
You know that where we rent trucks, it takes no weight. You got a motion made in second, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by the usual sign of aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? And I think that does it for me. Trustee Moore.
Okay, I'm going to be very relieved, I don't have to. I have a report from Bob Bar, public works supervisor. In public works, they cut brush on Lakefront for communication preparation for the Fourth of July celebration. Sweep parade route. Repair broke sewer line at Log Cabin Hotel. Clean new public works garage. Install services for two new homes on Priscilla Lane and one on Church Street. Continue repairing blinds, hooked up electricity, and other projects for the Fourth of July celebration. Started cleaning levers from the celebration, debris from the celebration. And that's all I have, sir.
Wow. Back to trustee Moore. Trustee DeBra.
Item one on my agenda is a discussion for the chief water plant operating position that we previously advertised. The position was posted in the village with a final deadline, I believe, of the 19th of June. Only one individual indicated an interest in securing the position, and that was Gary Malinsky. Without further discussion from me, I would like to move to the floor the appointment of Gary Malinsky as the chief water plant operator, in the chief water plant operating position, with a start date as soon as the paperwork can be completed. If that's tomorrow, that's fine.
I have a motion made, is actually any other discussion?
My only question is, or I guess, a question but clarification. Gary did meet, does he meet all the recommendations?
I'd direct that question to...
Requirements. He meets all the requirements, yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item number two, pardon me? Item number two is a discussion regarding motor equipment operator mechanic position. That is a position formerly held by Tim Lindkort, whose resignation we accepted earlier this evening. The position is budgeted in the operating budget for the year. We need to, first of all, determine if that is a position that is required for the operation of this village, and secondly, if we want to fill it at the same level, which it is now filled. Or whether any change in the position is necessary.
I believe that's a dual role position, isn't it?
No, it's...
Yeah.
Motor equipment operator and mechanic.
No, it's one...
Operator mechanic.
It's one, it sounds like it's two positions, but that's how the position was created, and it is in fact one position.
Well, I think the point I'm trying to make is that it could be used in public works.
That's written right into the...
Into the job.
To the job description, yes.
And that's been funded?
We're talking about Timmy's position.
Yeah, I know. I didn't think that was funded.
Yes, it did fund it in the budget.
Remember, we had to fund it, because Timmy was still in the position, and we had to pay him until...
We knew he was going to...
Until we knew he was going to resign.
Well, Moore, do we want to fill it? Any discussion? Do we want to fill this position?
I feel it'd be beneficial to the village to fill this position. We've had, I guess we've had a fill-in that's done the work while Timmy's been absent.
The superintendent feels very strongly that that position should be filled.
I feel it'd be very beneficial to the village to have a mechanic on the...
My position, I've noticed a number of somewhat small, I guess, all things being relative, items on the list of bills that we have to pay from time to time, that I believe somebody functioning in the mechanic's position could have performed for us had they been here and functioning.
Yes, we have to pay out numerous bills to other places to perform the mechanic duties.
And I think that was the original decision that was made in creating this position, was that if we had somebody working as a village employee for the village, doing maintenance and repair on the village vehicles, that would be cost-effective, and we wouldn't have to continually send them out for minor or some major repairs. And I, doesn't seem to me that the equipment is getting any younger or breaking down any less frequently. I think that that situation still exists.
I don't have a problem, I guess we would have to post that job.
We would have to post that job, assuming that we have decided that the job duty and description is that which we still desire, and post the job, take application, decide whether we want it to be open or competitive or promotional. Is that an option?
This is going to be up to you.
Do we want to open it to anyone who has the qualifications? Or do we simply want to make it promotional within the village?
Well, we have two options here, I think we can advertise it, or, you know, put it up for bid. Most of those people. And if we don't feel that somebody's not qualified, then we go up...
Go up to public. Put it in the village first, and then... Is that possible? If we go, post it in the village, union-wise, can we still go out afterwards if we feel someone's not qualified? Can we still go to the public afterward, or should we go to the public?
You would have to...
I guess what I'm saying is...
To tell the employee why he's not qualified. I mean, if someone signed up, and then you said, you know, either you don't meet the qualifications, or for whatever reason, then you decided to advertise. You're almost better to do both.
Is there a test for this position?
No, there's not.
Qualifications, I believe, are specific enough that a person that would qualify for the position wouldn't necessarily be a test to show that he qualifies for the position.
They would have to have the appropriate CDL. You know, there are different levels, and this would have to, I would think, be a heavy operator. And they have to have at least a year's experience in the operation of road building, construction equipment, one year's experience as a skilled motor equipment mechanic.
Is that listed on there, that it has to be a heavy equipment operator? It does say what a person can use, but I don't see heavy equipment operator.
On the back page?
It is on the back.
Or it just says, "One year experience in operation of road building and construction equipment, and one year experience as a skilled motor equipment mechanic." Okay, and then, on the bottom, it says, "Special requirements, eligibility for appropriate level of New York State driver's license." And that's where they're going to tell you what level CDL you need. Some of these, if you look on the front, that job was adopted February 23rd, 1983. I don't believe that the CDLs were effective at that time. So I think that part of this is going to have changed. You know, the part where they require the CDL and what rating CDL.
Would it be correct to assume that someone who is in that position would have to be able to operate any and all equipment that is owned by the village?
But it would seem so. I mean, if they're going to service it, they're going to have to test it.
Shouldn't know how to test it out to see if it's fixed. Yeah, exactly.
Well, I would think we would need as high a CDL rating as the village carries.
It seems appropriate to me, because, I mean, your mechanic's going to work on your fire trucks, too.
Any other discussion?
I would feel more comfortable opening up the bid process.
I guess, give a list of names. I mean, we could always...
You can limit it to village residents.
Right. So what I'm going to say is that we don't give village residents a better look than somebody else.
The board wants to open up, I don't have a problem with that.
We can't deny people applications, but the board can definitely give preference to village residents when you're reviewing it. And that is definitely listed right at the list.
We open it up, well, what's that do? Supposing somebody from the village, right now, would like to bid on a job, we open it up, what's that do?
Well, send to the...
Just puts them to bid on it?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
We do have somebody filling the position temporarily, or working in that capacity now?
Yes. We've been trying to fulfill that position, but it's been tough with the workload we've got.
I guess my feeling would still be the same as our last discussion on the chief water plant operator. I would like to keep it in-house, promotional. I feel very strongly that if we have good employees, give them the first option. And if we can fill it in-house, I would like to see us do that.
I hate to disagree with your philosophy and your inclination. I feel that when you have a position that's as technical and as important to the village, we should try to get the best individual for the position. And I think we can only do that by opening it up. That doesn't preclude somebody who is currently working for the village, but it certainly does give somebody else who might be equally or more qualified to work for the village. So I will put that in form of a motion, that the position for motor equipment operator mechanic be filled, and that the position be advertised for open applications.
Heard the motion, do I have a second?
I second.
Heard the motion made in second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by the usual sign of aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Name. The mayor votes out.
Now, I believe that needs some dates. Do you need dates, or do you need to get back with civil service first?
Unless the board requires a deadline, I can just publish it in the paper, I usually publish it for three days. If you want to set the deadline, that's fine.
30th of this month? Or the end of the month?
Applications will be received no longer than, you know, that's a pretty long time.
That's a long time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Say the 15th? Nine days.
How about if I send it in tomorrow, it'll probably get in the paper?
Say the 20th.
17th is Friday?
Yeah. 17th is a Friday, and you won't have time to review them all between that...
Like 16th?
Between Friday and Monday.
Just give him a shot.
If we go to the 15th, then we give us three days for something. Die momma rat.
Yeah, I think that's...
If you set with a deadline of 15th, that should give us enough time to get all the applications in and copied and given to each board member to review.
If you feel that... Today's the 6th. You get in, tomorrow's the 7th.
I'll never get it in tomorrow's day.
No, but I mean, if you call Friday... When do you feel it would be in the paper? Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Probably. Or when's, would you like it in on the weekend?
That's usually a good time, especially Sunday, because a lot of people want...
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, like that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then...
Then you're only giving people...
That's why I'm thinking the 15th isn't...
Well, you know, actually, you could go longer than that. I would really rather do that than pressure you to. You know, because I think you're going to get quite a few applications.
How about the 20th?
Have a deadline at the 20th? And then we can put it on the agenda for the first meeting in August.
It could be the 3rd of August. Okay, next item.
We ran long. We have another review. We're not quite as far along with this... This... we're not... we're not quite as far along with this... this position. This is a new position that we have discussed creating. It's a public works electric position. In your agenda package, you received, um, a listing of the duties and qualifications. I believe we probably all had time to review it. Are there any questions that you have regarding this position that we could discuss this evening?
Elaine, one thing that I noticed was the percentage of time. Is that rated, so I mean, are we going to be... Are we going to be held right down to the limit?
No. No, that's... this is... this is, um, an estimate so that the, um, position can be rated and qualified by civil service.
This is why it's so difficult to create a position, because you have to put the percentage of time. And it... I mean, how can you possibly do that? You have to do a real... Guess? Yes, make sure you end up with 100%. So, you know, and then they look at this and they'll come... They may not even approve this, I have no idea.
I guess the major consideration that we need to discuss is whether we want this to be a split position or whether we simply want it to be, um, an electrical line worker position, because an electrical line worker can also perform duties within public works. So that's the major consideration. By making it a split position, we would then be able to pay the individual one rate for the electric functions and another rate for the public works functions if we so desired.
I could see a bookworm nightmare there.
No. No, because we've had that before. We had this split position with the water plant, with sewer plant. The individual, when he worked in the sewer plant, was paid one rate. And when he worked in the water plant, he was paid another rate, and it was distributed on his time period. Of course, Mary may not agree with me that it wasn't a nightmare, but I...
Don't believe my person cannot qualify for a major repair. It's okay.
It's a possibility to upgrade, but the one we have right now won't do that. But that's... that, I believe, is a major consideration that we need to discuss this evening, is if we... if we feel that the village is best served by having a split position. And I think we can determine that by looking at the, um, difference in duties from the summer months to the winter months. I believe the basic reason why we are even considering, um, creating this position is because there is a great deal of work that needs to be done in the electrical department, and that work is primarily done in the summer months. And as we all know, sometimes the summer months are all too short. We could hire somebody temporarily for the summer months. The suggestion we made that we hire an individual year-round to serve the village better, performing electric functions during the summer months and public works functions during the winter months. The amount of steel plowing that we have had to do in the... in the past years has really worn our public works crew pretty thin.
Well, I think we should, I mean, let's go with civil service and see if we can create this position before we really go any further, I guess. If they're not going to let us, then I guess it's all irrelevant. I guess that's what we discussed before, that we do need. But let's continue with the... With the civil service and see if they'll let us create this position.
And you believe we've had sufficient input to justify creating this position? I guess that's my other concern here, see?
Yeah, I really... I do... From what they, you know, like you said, uh, the electric crew needs help in the summer and the public works need help in the winter. And by making this position, we're kind of... Kind of lessening the work of heat.
Trustee Duffer, you said that if we classified it strictly electric, we could... this individual could also do public works?
Yes. Our public works crew, um, excuse me, our electrical crew does a lot of that now. In the winter, they perform many public works functions.
So probably the only benefit of doing a slash position would be in terms of salaries.
Salaries, that's it.
Is everybody satisfied with what's on the sheet?
I don't... I didn't see anything that I wanted to add.
It basically covers all two sides.
The one thing that I think that I neglected to do was to put a copy of the line worker's job description in each one's basket. And I... I don't recall if I did that. But I will not be surprised if civil service comes back and calls and says, "Line worker." Because when I read that job description, I was very surprised. It says in there that a line worker must work public works, must work in the water plant, must read meters, must do all things which I didn't think fell under line worker. So I will not be surprised if civil service reads this and just entitles it, "Line worker."
When you send this down to civil service, will they know that we're considering making a split position?
They will when they read the cover letter.
Any more discussion on this? Consensus is then that we are going to go with this, send it to the civil service. And I think we need a motion to...
Would you like a motion to that effect? Move that the clerk be authorized to forward the job description for the electric slash public works, um, worker to civil service for their approval.
Second.
Heard the motion made a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carried.
I don't know before on my agenda. I would request authorization for Marie Klein, clerk justice, justice clerk, to, um, attend the advanced justice clerk training in, um, Canton, I stand Canton.
Canton.
She has prepared and forwarded a, um, woman authorized request. And I would request that that authorization be granted.
A second.
Heard the motion made a second, any more discussion? If not, all those vote... All those in favor vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Number five, water plant upgrade. I have the normal water plant update that I received from Garen Malinsky. There's a very important part of it this evening, however. And, uh, Mr. Malinsky wishes to advise the board as well as the public that as of June 25th, the water plant is now online with sodium hypochlorite, and everything appears to be operating fine. Uh, he's continuing to work on the old chlorine room with additional improvements underway. He also wishes... wished to extend his thanks to Tom Reed and Ernie Barkum for assisting in the switch over. They volunteered help as they knew that the work had to be done in a short period of time so that the plant could get back online to maintain, uh, supply of water to the village. I believe, as the board is aware, and certainly the majority of the public is aware, they have been following our discussions on this. We decided some time ago to change from liquid chlorine to sodium hypochlorite. It's a much safer and much more convenient, uh, system for chlorinating, uh, the water. And as Mr. Malinsky has recorded here, it is a June 25th. We are now online with that system. Any questions?
I have no questions. Any from the board?
Okay, next.
Very pleased to see that done.
Yes. Uh, it's much, much safer. Much, much safer. You're just not dealing with chlorine gas.
No gas whatsoever. Doing chlorox, but that's all. It need to be breached once and allowed.
I would request authorization for the clerk to publish the legal notice to go out to bid for, um, the year diatubation started.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Heard the motion made a second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Next item on the agenda is report on the town fire commission meeting. I attended the meeting, uh, I forget, July... June 24th. Uh, it was held here, uh, at Paul Stead Hall. As I had indicated, we decided to hold it in different, um, areas in the town so as to allow, uh, the public to attend the meeting if they so desire it. The meetings are open to the public. The next meeting will be on July 22nd. It's a Wednesday evening, 7 o'clock, at the Champlain, uh, village offices. Our meeting, uh, basically went well here. We gave reports on information that we had obtained. We are continuing to discuss the pros and cons of, um, several different, um, solutions for the problems that the town, the village of Champlain faces regarding their fire districts, their fire, uh, agencies. I'm very pleased that Mayor Rivers appointed, uh, Chief Entiery to the fire commission. I think he will have a good deal of input and be very helpful. I appreciate that. Next item on the agenda, I wish to report that we have received the DEC permit for the concrete wall project at the water plant. This was just received, um, appeared July 2nd. We have also received, uh, the DEC permit for the South End Storm Sewer Project. These are two very important projects, and it is good that we have, uh, received the permit from the agency. Any questions?
Now, we gotta wait for it to depart from the application to head.
I... I believe that's the end of things listed on my agenda. However, uh, Mayor alluded to, um, something earlier this evening, and that was the visit of the governor to, actually, the town of Champlain. Um, we, we as the village of Rouse's Point, having taken, um, a large measure of, of, uh, operations and the functions, were invited to attend the groundbreaking ceremony for the Champlain Plastics Plant. I would like to comment, first of all, that I am pleased that the village was able to offer their services. And secondly, I would also like to commend our police department on the fine job that they did in, um, securing the area and, um, moving the traffic where it had to be moved. And they did that without a great deal of help. And there were a number of comments made on the professionalism and the, um, integrity in which the village police department operated. I personally wish to give my thanks for that. Taking care of the governor is a large project, and it was done in a very short period of time, and it was done very well. And I wouldn't let that go without notice.
Absolutely right. It was done in a very short period of time.
I believe that's the end of my agenda. Thank you. One more. Yes, I have that right now. We need to authorize the clerk to advertise for bids for the water plant intake wall project. This was received this afternoon at 4:23 by Bax. And I guess we're lucky somebody was still hanging around the village office so as to receive it.
Pev, in my understanding that the engineering firm is going to do the advertising for the bids, or do the bids are going to go to them?
Correct. We do the advertising, and the legal advertisement will tell, um, bidders where to, um, go to get a copy of the bid, and where and when the bids will be opened. However, the bids will be opened, I believe this says here, at the village of Rouse's Point.
Okay. There's a motion made to have a second. Second. Heard the motion made a second, any more discussion? If not, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Trustee Menard?
Uh, my first, you know, on the agenda is to make a motion that we, uh, authorize the mayor to sign the fire protection agreement between the town of Champlain and the village of Rouse's Point.
Second.
Heard the motion made a second, any discussion?
This is the second year of two-year contract?
No, this is the first year of a two-year contract.
First year of two-year.
But it's right on time. This contract was approved in January. It is now July. It's right on time.
That's what had me confused.
That's right. Uh, you know the terms of the contract, court?
Forty?
Forty. Two years. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carried.
My second item on my agenda is that I would like to request, uh, an audit for the village court. Uh, this is done once a year. And... Do I need to make a motion on that, Pev?
Yes, uh, because we have to decide how you're going to do this. Now, last year, we went out and got bids to do this. It used to be done by our village treasurer, but it just, uh, I believe that he feels it's gotten too big, so we went out and got different quotes. So if that's the way you want to do it, we'll have to do that again?
We have to do this every year.
You guys are three-part.
Yes, two-part.
I don't think we have much choice.
I'll make a motion that we go out to bid for the audit for the village clerk.
Heard the motion made a second, is any discussion? If not, all those in favor vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hold the room and have ice on this floor.
All of us opposed? Motion carried.
Um, third thing on my agenda is a discussion of the MEUA annual conference. The 68 Annual Conference of the Municipal Electric Utilities Association of New York will be held on September 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, 1998, at the Lake Classic Resort, One Olympic Drive, Lake Classic, New York. We have, uh, just received this in the mail. And if anyone is interested in going, like I said, it will be held at the Lake Classic Resort. And I believe that we have to have it in, I think by the end of August.
I'm going to make a suggestion here. At this, if we make a decision tonight, who's going and who's not? Because if we wait till the end of August to send this in, we're going to end up sleeping down the road somewhere if you decide to go. Every conference we have attended lately, if we were... We fly at the tail end of it. And we never end up where we should be. I would like to see this board attend, and I also would like to see some of our electrical crew attend the banquet, the annual banquet, when they hand out the awards. Even though we're not getting any awards this year, we don't have people that are getting 20-year awards and stuff. Basically because it's being held in our area. It only comes around this area once in a blue moon. And the reason why for that is the president this year is Robert Metz from, uh, the municipal lighting in Plattsburgh. And, uh, the next president, I think, going to be Long Island. So you know where you're going to go next year. So you know where you're gonna go next year. At the municipal dinner that we had the other night, at Plattsburgh, there was about 25 people from the municipal lighting there, from the city of Plattsburgh. And I just feel that we should attend these things. I've attended several of them. I find them very informative. Some of the meetings are really exciting when they start talking about litigation and start getting up and arguing. So if you're planning on going, I would definitely let the clerk know by tomorrow night.
My last piece of agenda item is that I need to request an executive session for law enforcement.
Heard a motion made, seconded. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote. Trustee Moore?
Aye.
Trustee Dubruck?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. That's all I have. Trustee Burke?
Okay. The first thing that I have is during our budget process, we allocated funds to do two studies at the wastewater treatment plant facility. The first study is for the clarifier room ceiling problems that we're experiencing with some corrosion that's really causing quite a number of problems down there. We only have money in the budget this year to actually do the study. The second engineering study that we need to look at is for the diversion of the South End Sewer Line to the Maple Street Sewer Pumping Station. I talked to Tom Reed this afternoon about who he would recommend as the engineering firm to do the study. His only firm that he knew of at that point in time was Sterns and Wheeler. And I would open up any other, if any of the board members have another engineering firm that we could possibly look at to take on those two studies.
Has this been the engineering firm that's done it in the past?
Yes, Tom.
They did the composting project. I wasn't on the board, none of us. I think Stanley, you were on the board, weren't you, in the lane?
Half and half, yes.
Half and half. Were you satisfied with Sterns and Wheeler? You know, the only thing I know is what I heard over the years, that there were some problems. But I also understand that the, that the engineering firm was not at fault, a lot of it, that we were at fault.
We were at fault because of the way the specs were either drawn up or not following through on certain requirements.
Or their recommendations, either. Engineering firm's recommendations.
I'm not saying we were entirely at fault, but some of the problems were not entirely due to the engineering firm by any means.
Fires, I know, they're the only firm I know that does a lot, large sewer project, right? Is this the one we're doing, doing work at the fire station? Do they do that?
At one time Barton and La Judas did do some work for the sewer plant when Dave Suprenow was here. Do you remember that? Barton and La Judas did some work for us.
Yeah.
And there was also another, was it La Burge? Burge Engineering?
I think it was Burge, too.
They did, they did some work for us. You know, we could go out and get quotes. Yes, they are.
Why don't we do that?
If we get quotes on engineering.
Get quotes, and I think that would be better than to just sit here and say...
Is that all right with everybody?
It's fine. You know, we could get together, time, write up the dates.
I would make a motion that we send out two requests, one for the Maple Street Pump Station engineering study, and one for the clarifier room ceiling study.
Heard a motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote by use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Do you have any dates on that, Doug? DASAP?
Yes, actually, that would...
As quick as possible.
The second item on my agenda is, I believe that all of the board members have received the sludge analysis cost from Tom Reed. And I think that, and for the residents of the village, Tom Reed and Ernie Barkum have come up with an excellent report on what it actually cost us to compost our sludge versus trucking our sludge out of here, which was done this past spring and summer, a couple months ago, actually. The cost, let me just look it up once again. To have it hauled off-site, it costs us $52.10 per wet ton. To actually compost it currently, it would cost approximately $69.95 per wet ton. So to haul the compost, or to haul the sludge off-site is savings of approximately $17 a ton. Currently, the market's in our favor to continue to haul the sludge off-site. We, I believe it went to Canada the last time, there are some other markets that could possibly be opening up in the near future for our sludge, which might even lower the cost of removal. Talking to Tom Reed and the mayor, it would seem that we would continue, I would like to make the motion, to continue to remove the sludge at this time since it is a cost-saving opportunity for the village, and that we keep our compost facility ready and online should the, should the market fluctuate and it actually becomes cheaper once again to compost it.
Heard a motion made, seconded. Any discussion?
The question I would have is, I'm assuming that labor is included in that cost?
Yes, labor is included. That was one of the items when Dominic Fontana wrote his report on the sewage plant that we have. It was recommended, we need, in his estimation, we need 3.8 full-time employees at the plant just to maintain it.
Not including the composting operation.
Not including the composting. And right now, we have 3.5 full-time employees at the plant, which, you know, that three times according to Tom doesn't make a difference. He's operating very fine right now. But in order to do the composting properly and to maintain the facility the way it should be maintained, we would need additional manpower down there.
I guess my question is, currently, as the plant is funded, it's funded for the composting operation. So if we take that away, I guess I'm basically thinking about man-hours. We're going to be allocating then man-hours from the composting operation to the maintenance and plant operation functions. How does that equate in dollars and cents, and do we have the money to fund that? In other words, we've got, you've got labor in the composting, you've got labor in the operation of the plant, and by saying that we're going to be shipping the sludge out rather than composting it, you're transferring those labor hours from one function to the other, and do we have that funded? Is the question.
At this point in time, I don't believe that it is funded in the budget.
No. We're not funded for another person at the sewer plant to do composting. If we do composting, we would probably have to fill that position for, you know, with salary benefits, somewhere around $40,000 a year. And I've read that report, and I don't, I don't have the figures in front of me, but by shipping it out, and like Ron is saying, the market's really in our favor at this point. There's a lot of people looking for sludge. Hey, it's...
See, I understand that, but what I'm saying, I know you're not intending for another person to compost sludge, but right now, we're paying somebody to compost sludge.
No. Actually, I think there's a misconception.
Okay.
The misconception is, is that those 3.5 people that you got down there now just operate the sewer plant. Some of the problems we have had in the past of sewer plant is lack of manpower to do, personnel, I should say, to do the proper maintenance. And as you know, what we went through this past spring with the clarifiers. This has given them the time, this has given them manpower to start getting into that program properly.
I understand that, and apparently, I'm not making myself clear. Right now, in the figures that Mr. Reed and Mr. Barkum prepared for us, they took actual operating figures, am I correct?
Right.
And actually, operating now, we do have individuals who are performing composting functions.
Yeah, I guess I would say you're absolutely correct on that. The only problem is that when they're doing the, when they're spending time on the composting, it's at the expense of the maintenance of the facility, which is, which is where Dominic Fontana found fault with our, our plant.
And I understand that, but if, I guess what I want to understand is that we're comparing apples to apples, not apples to oranges. Because if we're saying that now we're going to pay to have the sludge removed rather than composting it ourselves, I want to make sure that those dollars are available and that we're not saying that those dollars are automatically going to transfer. In other words, to say that it costs $52 as opposed to $69, you're also including some labor.
Right. I think what, I guess my explanation would be, we are not going to, in terms of what our operating costs are at this moment in time, if we have the sludge removed, we are not going to say anything. But if we are to, if our concern is to operate the plant properly as, in accordance with what we're getting from DEC, we would need to add another one full-time equivalent employee down there to help us do the compost so that we can maintain the facility. So basically, I'm talking two functions. We're kind of, we're stretched very thin down there right now. So if we are to meet the DEC report and their, and their suggestions, we'd have to add another employee, and that's where the savings would be. Instead of adding another employee to remove the sludge at this point in time, is a, is a much less expensive method. But in terms of where we are right now and the money that we're spending, there is no savings.
I agree. In fact, it's going to cost us. There is no savings, but then additionally, then my question is, the money that we have in the budget currently, is that going, are we going to be able to afford to continue to have our 3.5 men there and also pay to have the sludge hauled away?
Right.
I believe that we, there is $8,000 or $9,000 in the budget to haul sludge.
Yes, I know there is money.
Yep.
Okay.
And I think that's what he's looking at, and he can haul it possibly for that amount of money.
Yes.
And maybe even less. The money's there.
Okay, and certainly, if the market's open up and the, and the price goes down, it would be less.
And I think that's one thing Tom would like to wait on before we start sending out anytime in the near future, is to wait and see whether that market will open up for us.
Okay.
He's got, he's got enough money in the budget at current pricing to haul away one complete bid. And then they have other things in mind to do. But with the marketing opening up, he might just better haul it all away.
Okay. That answers my question.
Okay. You have anything else, Trustee Burke?
No, was that, was that a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
You made a motion that we haul it?
Yes.
Second. Any more discussion?
And then we got the second, and we had discussion.
I'm losing it tonight. Okay, no more discussion. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Is that it, Ron?
I did receive, and I don't know if everybody else received, but I received the, the work completed at the wastewater treatment plant for the month of June. Did every other board member receive this?
Yeah, I can.
Can I go through that tonight, Doug? Even though it's not on the agenda?
Sure.
Okay. They've certainly done quite a bit. They ran the belt press for 16 days. They worked on the inventory list. Monthly reports have been completed. They loaded the broken electric poles for removal. They painted the DAF tank. They did some cleanup for the town of Champlain. They cleaned the storage room, painted the DAF room. They've ordered a new computer, ordered new samples, rebuilt the compressor in the press room, worked on the composting figures. They repiped the waste pit piping to the headworks, painted the number-two polymer pump and installed it. Worked on the maintenance schedule, rebuilt the portable pump, met with ICS Integrated about the enunciator panel, which we will probably talk about at the next board meeting. They, he met with Dominic Fontana, received the sodium hypochlorite delivery, worked on the computer program, installed a new float on the pump in the DAF room, and put in a new motor drive for the belt press panel. And I do want to comment, they have the new computer, it's installed, and I had to meet with them at the Maple Street Station, so I didn't get a chance to see the computer in operation, but from all reports from both Tom and Ernie Barkum, it's absolutely wonderful. They're, they're doing a splendid job getting all their data onto the computer now.
Is that it, Trustee Burke?
That is it.
I have one other item, my board members, so that I can pump it up. The 1998 NICOM Main Street Meeting, August 17th through to 19th, Cano Dego, New York. Have I talked to you about this, Ron?
Yes.
I would like to see someone from the board go to it. I went to it last year, or a few years ago. I think Tom went last year. We've been going to it, and it's an excellent agenda. I believe that Trustee Burke has expressed some opinion about going?
Yes.
Has he entertained a motion that we allow Trustee Burke to go?
I would authorize, yeah.
Second to that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Carry. How come you didn't vote for yourself?
I abstained.
I believe that's it for, I lost my agenda. Before, Ron. Trustees, other reports. Mr. Trecher?
I probably don't have any more now, except that I just want to say how nice I thought the Fourth of July was. I thought the committee, I thought everything was very nice.
Deputy Trecher?
Worth a comment.
Chief?
I'd like to thank Trustee Dubruck for her compliments to the police department on how we handled the governor's detail. It's nice to get positive comments occasionally. I also like to advise the board that on July 3rd, Friday afternoon, Aaron Muffet graduated from the Zone 9 Police Academy. Ceremony, I attended the ceremony as, at the request of the academy, as did all the department heads. Aaron did a fantastic job in the academy. Very proud of him. They went through a very rigorous physical fitness program during that academy, and the minimum qualifications for the physical fitness program was they had to be at least in the 40 percentile. Aaron was in the 40 percentile when he started. He graduated in the 90th percentile, and he received an award from the Zone 9 Police Academy for his endeavors there. So he, we've got him back now full-time, and so hopefully, we can get back to a regular I don't have all the complaint numbers compiled yet for the Fourth of July. It appears everybody had a good, it appears everybody had a good time, and it was a little rougher year for us as the police department than it has been in prior years, but we're critiquing some situations, and I'm compiling some numbers, and I'll have a report for, for Trustee Moore at the next meeting, along with the June report. That's it?
Comments to the public? Anybody wish, trust the board, this time, they do so? No comments from the public? Mr. Moore?
I would make a motion to be adjourned for the executive meeting, and for 10 minutes.
10, okay.
Can I second it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?